Good evening. It is now 7:00 PM. I would like to call the Monday, December 14th, 2020 Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations. Clerk Jones?
Okay.
Uh huh.
I'm sorry.
No problem. You're fine.
All right. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council members and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. To do so are in the chat. Directions to do so are in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and your address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person meetings. In addition, for citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat and the council president will call on you during the relevant time. Insert your name and your address, and you will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks.
Thank you. Due to the executive order by Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council meeting will legally be held by way of a virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams application. At this time, our application will begin by first District Representative. Someone, I don't know if you... Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kenneth Lee?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to govern and oversee the business of the city of South Bend. We thank you, Lord, for every day that you kept us, and we ask, God, that even through this pandemic, you've shown yourself strong in every area of our lives. Lord, we pray that you would bind us together with cords that cannot be broken. Help us to make decisions that will empower our city, uplift our city, and unite our city. We ask that you would look on the administration. We ask that you would look on our clerk's office. We ask that you would look on all the council people, and we just ask, God, most importantly, that you look on the citizens of South Bend. We ask that you would allow peace to abide in our streets and hope abide in the hearts of our young people. And we just ask, God, that everything that we do would be a reflection of our relationship with you. In your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I'm asked if anyone has any electronic advice, devices that you may have on, if you could turn them and put them on mute, and we'll see if that will help with the feedback. Prior to asking Clerk Jones for the roll call, I would like to publicly introduce our new council member, representing the 5th District, Councilmember Eli Wax. Councilmember Wax, we're so glad to have you, and this is your first full 7:00 PM meeting for the council. Unfortunately, it'll be the last meeting for this year, but we would definitely keep you very busy. We're glad to have you, your skills, your expertise, but most importantly, your commitment to working towards the betterment for all of our citizens. So again, welcome. I do not know, Councilmember Wax, if you would like to have any opening comments at this time?
Just to thank President White for her kind words, and I've had the opportunity to meet all my fellow council members, and I appreciate their gracious welcome, and I look forward to working with all of you towards the betterment of our city and representing my district. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome aboard once again. At this time, Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Davis?
Henry's here.
Vice President McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Present.
Councilmember Wax?
Present.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
President White?
Present.
All present.
Thank you so much. We'll now move to the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Jones, will you read the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes, please?
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of November 23rd, 2020, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to accept the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Is it moved and seconded? Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been accepted. Now move to special business. We have two resolutions. Clerk Jones, will you please read Bill 20-40?
President White, before we go any further, I am having a very difficult time with these links on this page, and I can't access the language for the reading of these resolutions. So I'm asking for some support here. I'm having a really difficult time getting accessing it.
Clerk Jones, can you put the resolutions up?
Okay.
From your office?
Okay. I'm reaching out to my staff to see if they can put the resolution up at this time.
Rachel and I were going back and forth, but we got here kind of fast, so I would just say it aloud.
Okay. You're talking the full resolution, correct?
Yeah, yeah, because it's not even linked on here. Like, some of these are linked, but 2040 and 2041 are not linked. 6220 is.
Okay.
Meaning that I can't go to the actual document.
Right. Okay, we're working on that right now. Okay. Roger has his hand up. Roger?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Councilmember Davis, I am getting that pulled up for you right now. We do not link the special resolutions to make sure that...
Something that Rachel was talking about earlier. Well, I had the hard copies for everything else, but didn't have it for this particular one.
All right. I am just getting access to the shared drive now, and I will get those up for you. So bear with me for one moment.
If it helps, I do have the hard copies of the resolutions. Oh, okay. Well, if you're more than welcome to read them off. Here we go right here. Because that was the point.
Clerk Jones, will you please now read Resolution 20-14, please? I mean, 20-40.
Yes. 20-40, "A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, honoring and encouraging the contributions of Kevin Liddell as a future leader of our city."
Thank you. I do know we have a sponsor. That sponsor is Councilmember Henry Davis. Would you please state your name and address and present this resolution, please?
Absolutely. Thank you. My name is Henry Davis Jr., State District City Council 5117. Ida Wood Drive is my address. I'm going to ask Clerk Jones if the family for Kevin, are they available, Mr. Liddell's family?
Yes, we are here. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. And so what we're going to do, because obviously this is way different than how we do when we're in person, but I'm going to read through the resolution. And thereafter, we'll have you, family, Kevin, obviously, to speak, and then we'll move into the council portion of it, and then we'll move on to the next one. So here we go. We're asked to continue by, excuse me, validity of any seat depends upon recognizing and keeping young leaders in their hometown, and we're asked Riley High School senior Kevin Liddell is one such young leader. The Common Council wishes to honor and encourage, and whereas Kevin has demonstrated his leadership abilities by being elected class president for the past two years, selected as senior captain of the Riley High School cross-country team, and being an alum of South Bend Michoacan Leadership Youth Class 26, and whereas Kevin has demonstrated both intelligence and work ethic by maintaining accumulative weighted grade point average of 3.7, being named member of the National Honor Society, being accepted into the Engineer Magnet Program, and by attending the Notre Dame Summer Program in Mathematics. And whereas Kevin has demonstrated dedication and commitment as a four-year varsity cross-country runner during which he received the Riley High School Larry Morningstar Award, was named MVP, and has three-time All-Conference Team Member, and has two-time semi-state qualifier, and whereas Kevin has recently been recognized for the combination of academic and athletic achievements by being named the Northern Indiana Conference All-Academic Team, and whereas... Let me push this up a little more. Roger, thank you. Now whereas Kevin has shown his talents and varied by playing cello in the Riley High School Orchestra, being a member of the South Bend Youth Symphony Orchestra, and a member of Corollars Show Choir, and whereas Kevin's other interests include being president of the Junior Usher Board at the Zee Raider St. John Missionary Baptist Church, and being counselor and trainee at Camp Ten... You're going to have to help me out with this one.
Tana Duna.
Tana Duna. And whereas in all his spare time, Kevin has volunteered for National MS Society Walk MS Girls on the Run 5K Event, the Logan Center, Logan Run, and has also volunteered at his church, St. Margaret's House, and the Northern Indiana Food Bank. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, the South Bend Common Council recognizes honors Kevin's commitment to greatness in all that he does. Section 2, the Common Council encourages Kevin to continue his commitment wherever his immediate future takes him in this academic world. Section number 3, the Common Council also encourages Kevin to return to his hometown and become one of its leaders when it's time for him to choose a home. Approve on this 14th day, December 2020.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Are now with members of the family, like to have any words, or is Kevin present?
Yes, Kevin is present. He is here with his parents, Mark and Jennifer Liddell. We just want to say thank you very much for recognizing our son. We are very proud of him and his next steps in both his academic and running career. We appreciate Henry Davis for allowing this recognition to be brought to your council today. And just speaking on behalf of the family, we just are very grateful for, you know, the city of South Bend for, you know, embracing him as a future leader in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you as well. And Mrs. Liddell, if you could state your name and address just for our record, please?
My name is Jennifer V. Liddell, 50650 Tumbleweed Trail, Granger, Indiana, 46530.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else from the family that would like to make any comments at this time?
I would like to say thank you for acknowledging me as a future leader of South Bend. I am very grateful that I'm looked at as one of the great things that can come into the future, and I wish all of you luck and in your future endeavors.
Thank you as well. We'll now move to the council. Prior to going to the public hearing portion, council members, do you have any comments you would like to make at this time? First District Representative Kenneth Lee, followed by Councilwoman Sharon McDy, 3rd District Representative.
Yes, I would just like to say to Kevin, continue in this good work that you're doing. When you learn to be a servant leader, opportunities open your way. You remind me, as I was listening to the resume of the things you're doing, you remind me of myself when I was in high school, and I had a great mentor, Charles Martin, and he instilled in us the responsibility to not just be good, but to be great, and when you become great, you get better. And you come back to South Bend and you serve, and so I want to say, continue in this work and this process. Continue to be faithful to your church. Continue to be faithful in the community, and many doors will open up for you, and many paths will be opened your way. And eventually, all of the things that you ever want to do, you'll be able to achieve them if you just believe that you can. So continue to good work, young man.
Thank you. Now we have Councilwoman Sharon McBride, followed by Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you, Councilman Davis, for bringing this resolution, and to the Liddell family, thank you for the work and commitment that you have done. And to you, Kevin, it is definitely an honor to hear such a strong young man that's working hard and doing a lot of community service already, and being a leader in your school. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing. Continue with great things for South Bend, and Riley High School is a great school to go to. So congratulations, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
I also would like to congratulate you, and as a high school teacher, I see the challenges that the students face every day in trying to juggle extracurriculars with their studies, and you seem to be handling that challenge very well. So congratulations to you.
Anyone else before I go to the public portion? I would like to also add my words of congratulations. It's just so exciting to, one, meet you, but also to read about you, and it's been stated that a single-minded person can really make the big difference, and so you're doing a wonderful job. I know you thank your parents on a daily basis, but they are your foundation as well. So congratulations. Councilmember Henry Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually echo the same thing. I was reading about him over and over again. We're in the middle of this pandemic, and our students, our kids, need more support than they ever probably needed before this thing happened. I watched my son every day go downstairs like clockwork to his computer to participate in his classes, and then it's just like, you know, it's just this stress that, you know, that's over him. It's over the household. My wife goes to work every day, and what I'm saying is that when you have someone that has excelled past these points of greatness, such as Kevin, I think, you know, it's only right that we recognize him, but also applaud him and pray that he moves further with his gifts. Young man, you're already leading, right? And so just keep leading like you have been, and keep recognizing your parents, because they are awesome, and they're doing an awesome job with you. And I can't say anymore, but thank you.
Thank you as well. I see another hand. Is that passed to Kenneth Lee? Then I'm going to move to the public hearing portion.
I just want to also say, let's congratulate his mother and father, his parents, his support system. A lot of kids don't have that, and it makes a big difference. So kudos to mom and dad for the work that you've done in raising a positive young man. I just want, I didn't want the moment to go without recognizing you, mom and dad, so thank you very much.
And I see Mrs. Liddell's hand up. Okay.
I just wanted to finalize and say thank you again. We appreciate all the kind words that you have given on our son. One thing that we didn't mention is that he's planning to study physics when he goes to college next year with the goal of becoming an astrophysicist. So we're very excited for that. He had to teach us a little bit about what that all meant, but we are excited to see where that journey takes him. So thank you again for recognizing our son. We appreciate you all so much, and we hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. We'll now move to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support and how dare them in opposition to this resolution?
Actually, I don't have anyone in the chat expressing interest to speak in support or in opposition of this resolution in South Bend.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. Council members, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 20-40, please.
I move that we send Resolution 20-40 to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moving. Second it. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Warner? He may be muted. We'll come back. Okay. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We'll now move to Resolution 20-41. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 20-41, please?
Yes. 20-41, "A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, acknowledging and thanking Pastor Mario Sims for his kindness and advocacy for South Bend's homeless."
And I do know that we have a sponsor. That sponsor is Councilmember Davis. We ask that you present Bill 20-41. State your name and address for the record, please.
He may be muted.
Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I am, and I said everything that you asked for. I didn't even know it. Henry Davis Jr., State District City Council 5117, Ida Wood Drive is my address. Okay, "The Resolution of South Bend Common Council acknowledging and thanking Mario Sims for his kindness and advocacy for South Bend's homeless. Whereas the word doulos is Greek word meaning bond servant, and whereas Doulos Chapel has been living up to its name since 2013 by providing food, clothing, and short-term emergency housing for homeless veterans, families, and individuals. And whereas Mario Sims is a senior pastor at Doulos Chapel, and whereas Pastor Sims has made it his life's mission to minister to the needs, and both physically and spiritually, of the most vulnerable members of our society. And whereas Pastor Sims is known throughout the community primarily for trying to meet the needs of the homeless by opening the facilities of Doulos Chapel to provide shelter warmth during the cold or a place for rest when they are rejected by others. And whereas Pastor Sims again stepped up this past summer during the homeless crisis in Monroe Park area after cities officials ordered homeless tents removed from a city-owned lot, and no one else came to their rescue, and whereas Pastor Sims and his congregation welcomed the homeless to his chapel's property to provide a place for them to gather and find rest for a short time. I lose my place when you move it. Give me a second. Hold on. I lost it. Where were we? You moved it. Whereas Pastor Simmons' congregation and several others provided food, clothing, and essential items and services at their own time and expense, although, whereas although these acts of compassion should serve as an example to those more fortunate, they have instead times drawn scorn and criticism. And whereas the South Bend Common Council understands that chronic homelessness is a serious problem with many causes and not enough solutions, it also acknowledges and thanks those like Pastor Sims who go above and beyond to ease the immediate conditions while continuing to advocate for just permanent solutions. And whereas although Pastor Sims pursues his ministry with no thought of earthly reward other than improving the lives of those he serves, he deserves not only recognition and gratitude, but also the common council's continued commitment to find just solutions for the homeless. And now therefore, let it be resolved by the South Bend Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, the Common Council acknowledges and thanks Pastor Mario Sims for the work he does to serve the homeless in times of immediate crisis. Section 2, the Common Council commits to work with, like, those like Pastor Sims to continue to find long-term solutions to the crisis of chronic homelessness. Section 3, may every member of the government realize that the primary goal of the government is to serve and protect those governed. Councilmembers, approve this 14th day of December 2020. Councilmembers, ask for your support on this particular resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, is there anyone else speaking as part of your presentation?
Yes, it is. Not, Blue Bird passed it before I read. Mr. Pastor Sims should be here as well as his wife, along with Pastor Larry. Am I correct? I saw Pastor Larry on earlier.
So we'll now...
Pastor Sims with his wife?
His wife?
Yes, I... Am I muted?
No, you're not muted. We can hear you.
Okay.
We state your name and address for the record, Pastor Sims, please. Thank you.
My name is Mario Sims. I'm senior pastor of Doulos Chapel, 608 South St. Joseph Street in South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I just want to begin by thanking, you know, this is so humbling, because this was truly a team effort. We had help from code enforcement. We had even contributions by Councilwoman Karen White, Sharon McBride. Lori Hammond came down unbeknownst to me at the time and cleaned up some of the areas, and there were others that we may not even know that came, and it's just, it was just seeing the best in South Bend. We recognize the day we were called that there was potential for harm. That police officers may have been harmed if they had acted to remove the personal property, and of course, the homeless would have been harmed. We were confronted with a situation that we had to take action. You know, we love this city. We want this city to be all it can be. And I think what happened this summer, for those 60 days, we showed what South Bend can be. People across the economic strata, the racial divide, people of all beliefs came together and showed up and showed out in South Bend, and I think all of us should be proud. I don't, you know, having this in my name really is not indicative of the effort. I got my wife coming now. She didn't want to show up, but this would have been not possible to have my wife come and sit beside me here. This would have been possible without my wife.
This would have been possible without my wife. It would not have been possible without Pastor Larry. It would have been possible with many people, without many people who gave their time, who came with prayers, who donated money, donated food, clothing. This is really, this is really an award that South Bend as a whole really should receive. Because all we did was play a role as citizens of this wonderful city of South Bend. I'm just, I'm just proud. I'm just really proud to live here. And I'm proud of the help we got from, from everyone. It's just, you know, there wasn't a day that went by that, I mean, I just, right now, you know, you just want to tear up just thinking about how many people came. And, and just if it was nothing more than bring a dinner or a meal, a blanket, or some money. South Bend showed up and I thank God. And I thank God for this common council. I certainly thank God for Second District Councilman Henry Davis. I don't know if there's anything you want to say, hon.
No, I'm just humbled. Humbled. It was an honor to be able to serve our community, the community that's forgotten, basically. A hurting community.
So I, other than to wipe the tears away now, I mean, we just, we just thank God for all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Councilmember Davis, before I go to the committee members, I mean, the council members, are there any additional comments you would like to make at this time? If not, councilmembers, before I go to the public hearing portion, anyone would like to make any comments? Councilwoman Lori Hammond? And then followed by Councilman Kenneth Lee.
Good evening, Pastor Sims.
Hi, Councilman.
Hi. I just want to thank you again for the service that you gave to the community, especially when the most vulnerable were so desperately in need. And even though the tents are not on your property, you continue to serve that community. And our city is blessed to have you. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sharon McBride, followed by Councilman Kenneth Lee.
Thank you. Just want to thank Pastor Sims and Mrs. Sims for your service and your work and stepping up and helping in the city's times of need. And there's a lot of work that we still have yet to do. And just appreciate your service and what you have done for the homelessness in our community. Appreciate it.
Thank you. God bless you. Thank you.
Councilman Chris.
Yes, I just want to echo the sentiments of everyone that has spoken on behalf of Pastor Mario Sims and Pastor Larry. I had the opportunity to meet them, work with them, and even help to coordinate with some people getting jobs. I think one of the guys ended up becoming like assistant manager at Goodwill.
That's correct, yeah.
And I just want you to know, Pastor Sims, you know, we don't do this for the accolades. We don't do this for for the awards. We do this because it's the right thing to do. And the Bible says, and as much as you've done unto the least of these, you've done unto me. So again, I know that taking on that project, we take it on in faith and not really knowing everything that it would entail. But you, you, for 60 days, you gave people a place to try to get their lives together. I was quite impressed by when I, when I went down there and, and just the love and compassion that you all showed. Pastor Larry, you did an awesome job. And I called you the Energizer Bunny, man, because you kept going and going and going. Throughout all of the hurdles and challenges, you guys just want to love on people. And that's what the body of Christ is supposed to do. So I, I want to thank Councilman Henry Davis for thinking to do this resolution. And it is appropriate that we wouldn't let the year go out without saying thank you.
Thank God. Bless your service.
And thank you for your work and your heart.
Thank you. I see Attorney Bob Palmer has his hands up.
President White, excuse me for a second. Councilmember Wax wanted to make a comment.
Okay. Okay, I can't see his hand. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Attorney Bob Palmer, I saw his hand up.
I was just going to say the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilman Eli Wax?
Hi, I just wanted to thank Pastor Sims for all that he does for the community, especially in times of need. And I know how much he do for people. And please keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. God bless you.
And I would like to offer my words of thank you as well. And we're going to now move to the public hearing portion, unless there's any other council members. Councilmember Rachel Tomas Morgan?
Thank you, President White. Pastor Sims, you said it yourself. It's always such a challenge to single out one individual when there are so many organizations and faith-based groups and unnamed individuals throughout the city over so many years who have helped and provided assistance to the unhoused, including those so very generous who wish to remain anonymous. There are so many we could name here, as you, as you just said.
That's correct.
Well, we'll now move to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of this resolution?
We have Jesse Davis that has his hand up. Mr. Davis, if you would state your name and your address.
You have five minutes. You're muted. I can't get his attention.
Jesse, you are muted.
Now you can hear me, right? Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I just want to congratulate, say congratulations to Mario and Pastor Larry and Mario's wife and and all the other folks who were involved. I met Mario several years ago and I've participated in, in marches and protests and, and all kinds of things. And although me and Mario have not always seen eye to eye on every topic or every issue, we've always been able to remain cordial and, and work our way through any differences. And, you know, the fact that he had the tent city at his church last year when the the city police came down and abruptly threw everybody off the city property. While that was amazing, Mario has done so much more over the years. I mean, even when we had the, the first tent city under the bridge, you know, Mario opened the doors of his church. He housed some people. He started taking in clothing and, and food donations and stuff, even, even back then, which was, I think, four or five years ago. And so this has been a continued effort by Mario and his congregation and Doulos Chapel. So I'm really glad and I was surprised I didn't get a chance to look at the agenda. So this kind of caught me off guard when I tuned in late and you were reading this resolution. So I think this has been a long time coming. And, and Mario, hopefully this will, will help heal some of the wounds from some of the abuse that people have had to take over the years over these issues. But thank you, Henry, for putting this resolution together. And, and thank you to the council for having this resolution on your, on your agenda tonight. And again, congratulations, Mario and everybody else with Doulos Chapel.
Thank you, Jesse.
Clerk Jones, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
No, I do not see anyone else expressing interest to speak. Thank you.
Then the public hearing portion is now closed. Councilmembers, what is your pleasure? Would now entertain a motion regarding Resolution 20 dash 41.
I move that we send, what's the number again? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's 2041.
2041 to the council.
Palmer has his hands up. Councilwoman.
Yeah, wait.
Thank you. Attorney Palmer?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the, we don't send this on to the committee of the hall. This is a motion to adopt the resolution.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. I was getting ready to clean that up too, but that's fine. Thank you, Attorney Palmer. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
I motion that we adopt Resolution.
20 dash 41.
20 dash 41.
Yes. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moving seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution 20 dash 41 has been adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
God bless.
We'll now move into the committee of the hall. Would like to entertain a motion to resolve into the committee of the hall.
So moved.
There's a motion. And do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moving seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you.
The committee of the hall is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where the bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. We're going to address Bill 6221. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 6220 a second reading?
Yes. 6220, public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend Municipal Code at Section 17 dash 132 and 17 dash 133 of Article 15, Chapter 17, to adjust the low-income customer assistance program rate.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Utilities Committee met earlier this afternoon and sent this particular bill to the full council with no recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address for the record and share with us the key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Thank you, Councilmember Nisgatsky and councilmembers. My name is Eric Corvath. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of South Bend. And I would like to share my screen with you so I can go over a brief presentation. Again, this is no different than we talked about in committee, but would like to do it for the benefit of those who weren't at committee. So this program, I'm going to talk about, I'll explain a little bit about what the program is, maybe go over some of the details and then, and then talk about why we're asking for an increased need for assistance in this program. So this is a program that we set up in late 2019 with the council to support low-income assistance on the enterprise fund bill. So that's your water, sewer, trash bill. Primarily as it relates to wastewater, we've got a discount that income-eligible folks will receive based on this program. This program in prior years wasn't allowed in the state of Indiana because there's no statute that allowed for differential rates. So everything is based on cost of service. And there's no ability for somebody to put in place any kind of customer assistance programs using utility dollars. As that changed, we saw that there's been the significant need for our low-income folks who are having trouble paying their utility bills. And so this program was put into place. And, and since then, we've seen that there's quite a bit of need out there. And in particular with the onset of COVID, that need has gotten significantly greater. We have, as part of this program, decided to partner with Real Services. One of our main goals all along was to minimize our overall cost of, of putting the program together and administering it. And we wanted to make sure that any charges that we had on residents, we're going to go to fully support credits that would go towards water, wastewater bills. We had talked to a number of different communities. Actually, I think the only one in Indiana that's doing anything is Citizens Energy. But had talked to communities in other parts of the country and had heard that a lot of their money was going to cover administrative costs because they had pretty complicated programs. And so what we decided to do was follow the existing state of Indiana qualifications under their low-income home energy assistance program that's, that has existed for a number of years, that Real Services for St. Joe County runs that program from state. And so we partnered with them and have put together a program that I'm going to talk about here that will help our low-income customers. So as I've mentioned, the affordability piece, there, there's a couple of things that are at odds here. One is we've had years of neglect on the infrastructure that we've got deferred maintenance that we need to start taking care of some of our old assets and, and start funding them more sustainably. So I'm talking about things like water and sewer lines that have been in the ground for hundreds of years. And in addition to that, we've got some large federal mandates coming up, the largest of which is a long-term control plan on the wastewater side, which will minimize the amount of CSO going to the rivers. But will also cost a significant amount of money for our ratepayers. There will be others on the water side with regulations coming up. But those, those things are at odds with the ability of our customers to pay their utility bills. And we've found that that's gotten particularly difficult for them with the impact of COVID. So, and, and again, I'm going to give you some numbers here that are old because quite honestly, I don't, there aren't a lot of studies that show the full impacts of COVID right now. And I know it's pretty fluid. But you've got 26% of persons in poverty in the last ACS survey in South Bend. 37% of our households are asset-limited income-constrained-employed households in St. Joe County. And our unemployment rate is currently around 6.1%. We have over 5,200 customers that have bills that are 60 days past due, over 60 days past due. This compares to November of last year, it would have been, you know, below 800. Now, keep in mind too that, you know, in the past, we had a program where we did shut offs and we've, we're not doing that currently. So, you know, that, those numbers should be different because what happened, you know, last year, if you got past a 60-day stew, if you didn't make arrangements for a payment plan or find a way to pay your bill, your water would get shut off. So, so we're well above the numbers that we had in the past. And, and the amount that's currently due over 60 days is around $1.3 million compared to last year would have been about $500,000. So there's, there's considerably more need than there has been before COVID hit. When you talk to a lot of the social service agencies, you'll hear the same thing, that they're getting a, a number of people come to them for help that they'd never had before. There's a baseline group, especially people below the poverty line, that they've always been helping. And that group hasn't changed. But especially the group that's in that Alice. But especially the group that's in that Alice range, you're seeing a lot of those people for a first time having needs and, and coming to social service agencies for help when they hadn't in the past. So what we, oh, this is just real quick, the unemployment rate, you can see how when COVID hit, it just spiked and we're still feeling those effects in South Bend. So this is what the program would do. We essentially, because it's a revenue-neutral program, we would be charging two dollars and sixty-two cents on everybody's bill. And what that would do is it'd go into a separate account that then would be used to pay a credit for low-income eligible customers. And that eligibility would be determined through Real Services based on the state guidelines that use a sixty percent of the median household income for the state of Indiana. And so if you fall within one hundred percent of that sixty percent, you would essentially get a fifteen-dollar discount. I have seventeen sixty-two here because I added the two sixty-two on because it would credit back the charge as well. So the net would be fifteen dollars. On the seventy-five percent, you would receive twenty-one-dollar credit. And if you were fifty percent of the sixty percent of state median household income in the state of Indiana, you would receive a twenty-eight dollar and fifty cent credit. Sorry. All right, there we go. So what does this mean to your bill? I just threw this slide in here. This is an average monthly enterprise funds bill, so that current average bill of eighty-seven dollars is all-inclusive of wastewater, water, trash, drought insurance, water insurance, relief. There's a number of different programs that are in the bill. And, and so if your bill right now is eighty-seven dollars and you do not meet this income requirement, it would go up to eighty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents if this ordinance was passed. Two dollars and sixty-two cents. If you meet the hundred percent of the sixty percent, it would go from eighty-seven to seventy-two. If you're at the seventy-five percent level, it'd go from eighty-seven to sixty-six. And if you're at the fifty percent, it'd go from eighty-seven to fifty-eight, fifty. And these are, these are monthly bills. So it provides some significant help to our low-income customers and residents. Again, here's the income eligibility. So sixty percent of the state median household income is that annual income category on the right. You can see it's based on household size. So if you have four people in your household, that annual income amount would be forty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars in order for you to be eligible for the program or less. If your household size is five, then it'd be fifty-seven thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars or less. Now, I mentioned that these are the annual incomes, but the way they work the program for verification is they actually take the most recent three-month period or, or the three-month period that you give them that's defined when you, when you bring it in. And we'll do income verification on that three months. And I mention that because with a lot of people being unemployed during this time period of COVID, they will meet those requirements. And so, it will not, they will not look at your full year of income, they will look at your three months of income. And that is on a rolling basis, so they start September fourteenth and they go through the end of May. And every month, we will get a list from Real Services that we will then know where we should be putting credits towards water and sewer bills. But here's the process, as I've already alluded to, of, we're encouraging everyone to go to Real Services. That's where they're going to sign up for the program. And again, if they're eligible for the sewer credit, they're also going to be eligible for a energy assistance credit. So they will, they will be able to get both if they meet the income verification. And Real Services will provide that data to us and then we'll adjust the bills. And again, these, these are residential customers only. With that, I don't know that I have anything else, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horvath. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Councilmember Nuzgatsky?
Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. Mr. Horvath? I asked you a question during committee about the annual income page that you just showed us. And you mentioned that the family of four, that seventy-nine thousand that shows on that page is the sixty percent of the state MHI. One question I have is why we are using the state numbers when we are able to use the city income numbers? The city of South Bend has a significantly lower MHI than even the state has and we're well below the national average. So in South Bend, average household income is thirty-four percent. You take sixty percent of that, that's twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, thank you for your question, Councilmember Hammond, I appreciate that and, and it's an excellent question. I think that you're exactly right and, and you're, you're making a case for the significant amount of need that we have in South Bend, which is greater than what you see across the nation, across our state. And so there is significantly more need in South Bend than you, than you see in other places. So it would make sense to use a lower number. Having said that, the reason that we use these numbers is because it gave us a basis that was already established through the state and that was already being income verified for eligibility through Real Services. What we found when we looked at programs in in Pennsylvania were that they were spending a lot of money doing this income verification, hiring people to make sure that they could track, you know, people's salaries and where they're getting income. And we wanted to make sure that we were trying not to use monies into this program to cover those administrative costs. And, and so that's why we chose to follow the LIHE program requirements and eligibility verification process.
Correct, I understand that, but my basic question is, with the median household income average in South Bend, it's going to be, my estimation would make it way beyond the five thousand households that you estimated that would qualify. So I don't know that this is, this is a program that's able to offset the costs by the increase of the two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Yeah, so I can tell you those numbers were predicated on numbers that we got from Real Services who's been running the LIHE program for a number of years. That does not mean that everybody eligible is signing up for the program. And so to your point, if everyone that is eligible signs up for the program, we will have a greater need and we will need to either adjust the credit down or adjust the surcharge up to meet that need over a period of time. So, we, what we did though was we used the numbers that they currently have in the program that are meeting those income qualifications. And we, we used that as an assumption for how many we would have in a program that was structured similarly. Does that make sense?
Just one last statement. I, I think it's difficult for us to make an assessment on the advocacy of this program if we don't I don't know that we have all the information we need here. We don't know how many families we'll be serving. A lot of this is very unclear.
So, in, in the low-income home energy assistance program, they have a, a number of people who already meet the income qualification requirements. And the subsector that's in the city of South Bend is a little over, well, it's just under forty-eight hundred households. So those are the numbers that we based our numbers on for determining the need. And then from that, how much credit we would need to put into it. So those are based on them running the program for years and, and actually doing the income verification for city of South Bend residents.
Are there any other, are there any other council members that have a question?
Yeah, I had my hand up for a while, this is Henry.
Sorry, Councilman Davis.
It's fine.
See ya.
Totally fine, yep. Mr. Horvath, have you received any of my emails today?
I did receive one from you. Yes, about this.
Yeah. I have comments, so I'm going to hold those until, to afterwards, action questions right now. I just have one question after, you know, that. Do we have any other ideas of, of supporting this program without increasing taxes? Well, you'll probably say fees, I will say taxes.
Yeah, well, it's, there, there is a distinction. And, and enterprise funds are rate-based and they're cost-of-service-based. And they, they are also for services provided. And so, are there options that you can use outside dollars? There could be. So, we would have to figure out which funds you're talking about or, or what sources and see whether those were legal, legal funds. There's significant need out there. And you're going to have other community support that's going to be needed. We already know, as we had talked about earlier, that a number of different agencies get emergency food and shelter funds, which can be used for utility bill relief, as well as other relief, like just allowing for food, emergency food for, and shelter for individuals. And, you know, you've got a number of different issues that we're going to be dealing with with COVID. And, and one of those is also providing, providing housing assistance so that we can make sure that we don't have increase in, in homeless population and that we don't have folks that can't meet their rental income and get evicted from their homes. Currently, there's the moratorium on evictions, they'll go away. And then these bills are going to come due. And there will be significant need there as well. And so those outside community sources, I have a feeling will be tapped greater than they ever have been. And, and it's not like, you, you all know when you've reached out for one of your citizens, how difficult it is. And they may have, you know, a, a large rent bill come and do and you reach out and you're able to get a couple hundred dollars of assistance. It nowhere meets the full demand, but it, it definitely helps. But there's significant need out there that's currently unmet. And I just see that growing in, in the current situation we're in.
So the question is, do we have funds that we can use to support this program without raising fees?
So, the answer to that, of course, is yes. There, there are funds that you could.
Why are we, why are we asking the taxpayers to pay more?
So we're, we're asking the ratepayers to pay a surcharge for those who are above a certain income qualification. And the reason that we're doing that is to make it rate-neutral. If we were to take it from other sources, it's all about prioritization. And if, if we're taking it from somewhere, you either have to raise rates to cover that or taxes, depending on where it's coming from, or you have to decrease services somewhere. So you have to cut something back. And, you know, that's part of the reason I, I had talked about having deferred maintenance on, on our utility assets. Because this is consistent over time that we have underfunded long-term assets because it's easy to not prioritize them. And then over time, end up having systems that are really old and falling apart. And, and, you know, not in the shape that we should have them in. So you can use other funds, but it's really a matter of prioritization and.
Well, our prioritization can't keep going to the same well because we're going to dry that well up. And so my last question to you is, would you be interested in continuing this out until probably the first or second meeting in January? So that we can get our, our hands on what that looks like long-term? Because we do have a lot of major bills coming through. And for us to, as a council, vote this through, and we just finished looking at a referendum for the school corporation and so many other things. In the middle of a pandemic, you're asking people to pony up some more money. I, I just don't have a good feeling, I'm very uncomfortable with this. And I'm not saying that the people that need the help, shouldn't get the help, that's not what I'm saying. But I, I will think that we should do better at, at looking at all of our sources of funding that we already have versus immediately going to the taxpayer or the, as you just said, the people who, who pay the rates.
Yeah. But to be, to be clear, this program is structured specifically to help the most vulnerable population in South Bend. And what we were trying to do, and, and trust me, I know there's no perfect system. What we're trying to do is have those who were over a certain income that would have greater ability to afford the rates, cover that and be able to give a credit to those who couldn't. And, and that were either below the poverty line or, or well below this sixty percent of MHI. And so, you know, that's, that's how we structured it. And it really was not meant to take somebody struggling and, and make it worse for them. It really was meant to try to redistribute those dollars so that we can take care of the most vulnerable populations.
Okay. I see another council member has a question. President White, you had a question? Was you next, I believe, and then Rachel Tomas Morgan?
I think she was before I was.
Okay, thank you. Rachel Tomas Morgan, Councilwoman, you have a question?
I do, thank you, Chair Nuzgatsky. Mr. Horvath, thank you very much. I, I have two questions, actually. I believe you answered the first one, but in terms of ongoing support for those impacted by COVID and utility support. So we, I mean, we worked as a city to be able to provide rental and utility, additional rental and utility assistance early in the fall. The monies that were appropriated from that, from the CARES Act, we think are going to, you know, be able to get us through the next couple of weeks. And we're hoping for additional for the, for the first quarter of two thousand twenty-one because we are all anticipating that those are going to be, we're going to be hit hard even further and those are going to be really dark months. I, so my question to you with that is, do you, I mean, to what extent could additional CARES Act monies be available for? I mean, are we, are we anticipating additional CARES Act money to be able to support further utility assistance?
Yeah, I, I don't know for sure, but it did look like the last bill did have some provisions that may be eligible for utility assistance. Quite a bit of the last CARES Act funding available went to rental assistance and not as much to utility assistance, but it definitely can provide a shot in the arm. There may be other things that we're going to need to do as a community. beyond a customer assistance program and beyond outside sources. And there may come a point to Councilmember Davis is where we're going to have to make some decisions on where that money comes from and, and make sure that we're doing our best to meet the needs of our, our citizens. And yeah, the CARES Act funding clearly would be a significant help in this equation, for sure.
Mr. Horvath, my second question is, I've had some conversations with others when we were downstate at the beginning of the year for, for the AIM conference, you know, as a, as a newly-elected official. And we did our boot camp training, but had a number of conversations with consultants down there. And they were talking about comparable rates across, across the state. How do, how do our rates here in South Bend compare to other municipalities?
That's, that's a good question. We're pretty competitive, but I haven't looked at those for a couple of years. And we will be putting something together that we'll be sharing with you at the beginning of the year. That will show where we, where we fall within that. And it's really a great question, I think, that we need to continue to make sure that we look at the services that we're providing, the quality of services that we're providing, and benchmark those against other communities and make sure that what we're charging for services is in line or competitive with what others are charging for services. And so I apologize that I don't have a, a specific answer for you, but we will be getting those, that data put together and can show you what it looks like in our comparison versus other cities.
Yeah, I fully expect that that's additional information that you all will be sharing in the, as you come back to the council about rates. But my initial conversations with some of these folks is that ours were, were lower than other communities across the state. So just wanted to share that bit.
Thank you.
Okay, President, Councilwoman President, President White, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Horvath, this is to amend the ordinance that was passed, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think that, you know, an ordinance was passed in October of 2019, set the percentages. And so this bill that is before us is to adjust the low-income customer assistance program rates. So that ordinance has been passed, and those particular percentages will be implemented in January 2021. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
So what we have now is that, based on the conditions and COVID and other types of things that have impacted our citizens, this is a, almost like amendment to adjust the low income. So the ordinance has been passed. This is to increase the rates.
That's exactly right. Yeah, thank you. I should have, I should have made that point clear. I appreciate you making that point.
So what we have before us is if we, and based on the questions and the concerns, and if you're looking at hopefully implementing this in January of the, after January, I think it would give you some time to, you know, address those questions with the council members and have that information as well. So that's just a comment I would just like to make, to clarify what we are actually looking at this particular time.
Thank you.
Councilman Warner, you had a question?
So, yeah, based on what President White just said, and I, I thank you for that comment. I want to make sure I understand this clear. We're already at 175. And this vote would actually add eighty-seven cents on to that, correct?
That's correct.
So we're really just talking about, you, you had it all up together in 262. We're just talking about eighty-seven cents. So really, when I spoke at the committee hearing, I talked about 3.3%. I did a calculation, but we're really talking about a 1% with the eighty-seven cents on an average bill of eighty-seven dollars.
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Is that it? Councilman Wax, did you, are you able to signal when you have a question? Now, I just want to check since I see you.
I, I appreciate that. I usually, I've been putting it in the chat. I'd like to make a comment later, but I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other council members that have a question for Mr. Horvath?
I believe a council member, Davis, has his hand up.
Well, he's already had his two questions for this.
So that man can't talk anymore?
Uh, once we get to the, through the public portion of this and come back to the council, you can make a comment, yes.
Right on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is, if there are no other council members that have a question, I'm going to move to the public portion of the meeting?
We, we have Jesse Davis that would like to make a comment. Mr. Davis, please state your name and your address.
Jesse, Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I actually talked at the committee meeting about it. And, you know, the overall gist of adding anything to a person's bills or liability at this point with COVID is, is just ludicrous, to be honest. And, and, you know, I mean, Henry Davis brought up a good point. Are there other sources of funding to do this instead of basically saying, hey, look, you residents who can afford to pay, we're just going to charge you more to help the people who can't pay? And, and, you know, trust me, I've been out there with the homeless and needy people and doing what I can for anybody I can to help. And I know that helps needed, but we've got other places and other things we could look into. And I, I made a comment in the chat. You know, there's numerous businesses, large commercial companies here that get huge discounts on their water bills. So I would think that would be the first place we should be looking is that these businesses who are getting these larger discounts on their water services and, you know, maybe cut those discounts a little bit instead of going back into your average Joe's citizen's pocket to hunt for money. I mean, these businesses can afford that two or three dollars a month much easier than a average Joe can. So that's just one thing. I'm kind of curious if we've even looked at any of those businesses that get these large discounts. And is there a way we can cut those discounts a little bit to make up this funding instead of dipping into the citizens' pockets once again?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Horvath, would you like to respond to that? You get five minutes to respond.
Sure, I'll, I'll just be brief. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Davis. I, I'm not sure what discounts he's referencing. I'd have to take a look and, and try to see that. But our, our rates are cost-of-service based and they're across all customer classes. So on the water side, again, we wouldn't have the ability to do differential rates. Any type of rate structure that was unique would have to go through the IURC and be approved. And so we, we only have the one set of rates there. On the wastewater side, there is an ordinance that allows for the council to do rate, a discount based on certain factors. I don't have that in front of me. And I believe that there may be two entities that I know of that are, that have those discounts. I can't think of any others off the top of my head. But those do go through the council and they have a number of parameters that it has to meet that the council is set in order to allow for those discounts. So other than that, I'm not really sure of others who are receiving discounts.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Horvath. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else wanting to speak in favor or in opposition to this bill? It should be in favor of, but, or opposition to this bill?
I don't see anyone else in the chat that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this bill.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, then I'm going to close the public hearing on Bill 6220. It is now closed. If there are any questions from, or statements that the council members would like to make regarding Bill 6220? I believe Councilman Wax, you had a statement?
Yes, I just wanted to say that while I think that the idea is noble about helping the people who need it most at this time, I don't think now is the time to be raising additional fees on anybody. There's a lot of people hurting, not just the people who are of the lowest income. We really don't have a way of knowing how this would impact. There's a lot of families that are on the fringe where this makes a big difference to as well. I think the fact that we just passed this for the original amount of 170-something and then are asking for it to go up again, it will. Mr. Horvath indicated that there's a good chance that this would be needed to be adjusted once again. And then we know that there's additional fee increases that will be coming down the, down the road that may be significant as well. I don't think this is the time to be asking the taxpayers to pay additional funds.
Thank you for your statement, Councilman Wax. Clerk Jones, do you have the order in which the other council members? I believe it's President White. President White, you wish to make a statement?
Yes, I would want to ask the sponsor of this bill if he would be willing, based on all the questions and the need for additional information, be willing to come back to this council the early part of next year. Because, one, the ordinance has already been passed. This is to amend the rates and it's based on the number of questions and concerns that I've heard, have heard in terms of additional information. I think that would be in the best interest as we make sure that we have all the information that we need. I was on the original committee. We spent months, you know, doing the research, talking with key individuals throughout the state, but also looking at the best practices. And this is how this particular ordinance was passed. And we know that just as we have a growing homeless population, we have the population within our community that are in need. And so this is just another piece of looking at how do we, as a city, begin to support our citizens? But on the other hand, we also know that as we prepare for the 2021, 22, I'm sorry, budget process, that we will have to look at our revenue streams and also begin to weigh that out into how do we deliver the basic? You know, I'm not talking about fluff, but the basic services for our cit, our citizens where we know that we're going to be challenged. And that came out very clear in this last budget hearings and processes. So that would be my recommendation. And I'm not making a recommendation. I'm just putting that out for the sponsor for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, President White. Mr. Horvath, would you like to respond to the statement? Oh, I'm sorry. Does he get to respond during this portion of the? Yeah, I'm sorry. I was out of order. The next council person, I believe, was Kenneth Lee, Councilman Lee?
Then I think Councilman Henry Davis had his hand up too, as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I just want to echo the sentiment of everyone right now. As I've listened to the presentation and as I've, from committee meeting till now, it, it just doesn't seem like it's the right time to do it. And, and I, I would like to have some more information on this, on the program and how it's going to roll out. But as everyone else has stated, is, you know, it's already tight right now. And, and to add another increase to everybody right now probably isn't the right time to do it. So I, you know, I'm torn, but, but my gut feeling is that this isn't the right time to do it. So that's my feelings on it.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Councilman Henry Davis, you had a statement to make?
Absolutely. And, and I want to say thank you to Karen for hearing me out about continuing this. I said that earlier. But even before that, as a chair for this particular committee, I had emailed the mayor, Mr. Mueller, Mayor Mueller, and also Mr. Horvath this morning. And then after the committee hearing, I emailed Mr. Horvath again to ask for a continuation for a better understanding of how this is going to work. Politically, this looks really bad for any council to vote this in because of COVID, because of poverty, because of all the other things that have gone on. We understand the other side and it's all finances. But as we're trying to work through this thing that they call like this, this, this governmental structure that's set up, you try to hit everybody before you go public about how you feel about a particular bill. And I probably could do that. I tried to say, Mr. Horvath, Mr. Mayor, I don't think this is a good time. This is, this, this doesn't look good. It puts South Bend in the bad light again. Look, we're a high, we're one of the highest counties in the state. I think it's us and also Lake County that has an extra percentage tied to our poverty taxes. And it had been like that for a while. We have a problem, we have a foundational problem right now as it relates to our finances. It's just not this. And so I said this back in 2014 when I ran for mayor. I said that the sewer system was going to cost close to a billion dollars. Everybody laughed at me. It's documented. People laughed at me. Oh, it would never be like that. And I said the, the water bills would be in the neighborhood of $200 a month. People laughed at me. And look what we're doing right now. And so I, I hope that Mr. Horvath, you know, pumps the brakes. We can go back to some type of understanding later on about how this money is going to work, where we can pull money from, and, and stop asking the citizens, the ratepayers, the taxpayers to keep footing the bill as we continue to spend more and more money. We have to figure this out, or we won't have a city. We have to figure this out and very soon. I yield.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilwoman Sharon McBride, you had a question? Or a statement to make?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a statement. I would have been remiss not to speak up and say anything as a former councilperson when the bill was passed.
You're muted.
Thank you. I said I would have been remiss not to say anything as being on the council when we passed this as a full council in 2019. So the ordinance has been adopted. We had gone through extensive conversation and options, and we had also talked about it. And I was one who pushed back about the timing and not increasing it for all of the residents, which was first suggested. And we went through probably about nine months. And then I know that it was extended, that they did not implement it when they wanted to and extended it for another six months and then another six months. So until they try to get something workable. So I know that the full council, we passed it last year. And the middle or upper-class citizens would take the brunt end of the increase. So I just wanted to give a little more context, but I would have been remiss not to speak up. But if, I, I definitely understand with new council that people need information and to get a better understanding of what was presented to us, how we got here and what we can do. And things definitely has changed with COVID and our economy, and not just locally. But I appreciate everybody else's comments, and I just wanted to put mine on record. I yield.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Councilwoman Lori Hammond, you have a statement?
Thank you. Yes, I just want to remind everyone as we're debating this one rate increase that there is a strong possibility that we are looking at proposed rate increases for two other departments, as was mentioned in our committee meeting. So this is a very difficult time for people. And the notion that we will be increasing the cost for essential utilities at this time, this is just really bad timing. I yield.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that I missed that would like to make a statement at this time? Okay, then at this point, the public hearing on Bill 6220. Okay, then at this point, the public hearing on Bill 6220, Attorney Palmer?
Yes, I didn't know if you were planning on giving Mr. Horvath an opportunity to respond. President White made a suggestion about withdrawing this or delaying it for a period of time. I think Mr. Horvath should be given an opportunity to address that question specifically. And if he believes that more time would be beneficial to inform the council of how much more time he would need to provide the additional information that some council members would like.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Horvath, would you like to make a statement about the suggestion by President White?
Yeah, so let me just say this. We do have the existing ordinance that will go into effect, or we'll start the process once we get our new billing software in the middle of January. And that will provide relief for those folks that are low income and the vulnerable populations in South Bend that is significantly needed. And that's really what the goal was from the onset. And we were just trying to increase that credit because we saw how significant the need is out there. And we're hearing it from folks all the day, all the time on not just their ability to pay their utility bills, but their ability to keep food on the table and just thrive in general, pay their rent. And I know that everyone on this call knows that. So that's really what was behind this and what was motivating the increase. And so the council needs to make decisions on these things. And by all means, if time, you know, if you want time to consider this and want to move forward with the existing program as it is, it definitely is going to help folks. It's not going to be as large of a credit as the new ordinance, but it provides significant help and much more than we've ever had in the last 150 years for folks in terms of being able to do differential rates. And so I'm comfortable with that. And, you know, if there's additional information that the council needs, I'm more than happy to put that together. But the need is there and the need is real. And we do need to figure out ways to address that as a community, so.
Okay, so when you say, I guess I'm a little lost at what that meaning is behind your statement. I'm sorry, just to make sure I'm following correctly.
Just to be clear, I'm comfortable if the council's not comfortable moving this forward, it would be silly for me to try to push that forward. That just doesn't make any sense. The council should have answers to whatever questions they have and should feel comfortable moving the ordinance forward before it moves forward. But so, yeah, so I'm comfortable with Councilmember White's suggestion that we can postpone this till a later date. We have the existing program in place and see how it's working, see where the need is, how well people are able to keep up their utility bills and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Palmer, I do have a question then as far as how we move on this. Do we still need a motion then at where we're at since I don't believe he can pull the bill? I mean, what's the protocol? I just want to make sure I'm moving correctly forward.
You just make a motion for a continuance.
Attorney Palmer?
That's correct. Mr. Horvath seems to be not opposed to gathering more information provided to the council. I would suggest that a definite date be set because everything we're undergoing right now is very fluid. And, you know, big changes can be made in a small amount of time. So I think Mr. Horvath should be given whatever time that he prefers to provide additional information. And, you know, if he needs additional time after that, he can certainly approach the council and ask for that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Okay, so at this point then, what I see, I see hands up from other council members, but we have been through the statement process?
No, I want you, I want to get something clarified. And that's why I raised my hand.
So you have a question?
No, I'm talking to you. It's not an attorney question because I understand that you just make a motion to a certain date. And we'll get a second and we'll call the roll. That's not my question. My question to you and the rest of my council colleagues, because it seemed like a hot potato thrown back at us. This council, I could be wrong, so this is why this is the question. Is this council in support of a bill that asks us to vote for it without fact information? And do we come back and when we say that we don't want to do it, is there a list that's going to be taken up of questions asking what we are looking for? I think there was a number of questions asked. I don't know if we do, somebody, you know, pulls all the notes from the meeting and sends it to Mr. Horvath. But it just sounds like to me, and I could be wrong, that the council needs to make a decision. I think the council is making a decision. I think it has to go back to the administration about how to reconfigure this. Am I correct or am I wrong?
That is your statement, Councilman Davis. At this point, I believe everybody has made a statement, and I'm ready to close this hearing on this bill.
But I asked you a question for clarification. That was a question.
Can I interject for a second? I believe, and Mr. Horvath can correct me, with the current ordinance effective January, there will be an increase. And I don't know what that date is. And this was for an amendment to that. And if I'm understanding correctly, the additional amendment will not take place until there's an additional clarification and if the council decides to move or not. But I think, I thought that the ordinance that was passed, that we will be implementing the ordinance as it stands in January. And that is an increase.
Okay, at this point, the public hearing on Bill 6220 is now closed. I would entertain a motion regarding Bill 6220.
I would like to make a motion. You said 6220, am I correct?
Yes, Councilman Davis.
I would like to make a motion that we continue Bill 6220 indefinitely.
There has been a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second? There has been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll? Councilwoman, President White, you have a?
I don't know. There's a motion on the floor, but I thought that we wanted to include what type of information are we asking for, or is that going to be sent to Mr. Horvath as well? Each council member has opportunities to sit down and speak with him as well.
I just asked that question. She told me I couldn't talk no more. That's what I asked. No, I'm serious. That's what I did.
I want to look at the motion, but let's go with the motion.
Yeah, I know, but I found you asked the same question I just asked, and she told me I couldn't talk anymore.
Okay, I'm looking at a point of order. And if I look at the way that this committee is supposed to be run, everybody has had adequate time. This is not a time for debate. There has been adequate, if you have a question after that, there's a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll call? Yes, Councilmember Wax, is this for to continue? Yes.
Indefinitely, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Wax? I can read your votes. Okay. Councilmember Niskowski? No. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Nay.
Councilmember Warner?
Nay.
President White?
Nay.
Okay, we have five nays and four ayes.
Motion dies.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. We now move to Bill 6320.
You have to consider another motion.
I was going to raise my hand.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Niskowski, I would like to make a motion that we will continue this bill until February of 2021. And that questions and concerns in terms of additional information will be given to Mr. Horvath in January so that he can make sure that he has all the information. And also, we know that the ordinance that has passed in 2019, we should begin to have some additional information with that as well. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, there has been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, will you please take the call? Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. The motion has passed with nine ayes.
Thank you.
We will now move to Bill 6320. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 6320 a second reading? 6320, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the South Bend Common Council Approving an Interfund Loan from Fund 641 to its Works Operations to Fund 16 Solid Waste Operations for Cash Flow Purposes and Declaring an Emergency in Connection with the Time Specified for Its Repayment. Is there a committee report?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was trying to get off mute. The Utilities Committee met this afternoon, and we send this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Is the petitioner present? And I ask that you state your name and address for the record and share with us the key points that the bill is before us.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Niskowski. Dan Parker, City Controller, office is on the 12th floor of the County City Building. So this bill, as stated in the title, is authorizing an interfund loan from the Sewage Works or Wastewater Operations Fund to the Solid Waste Operations Fund. And the purpose behind that interfund loan is to ensure that the Solid Waste Operations Fund has sufficient cash to finish the year without going into a negative cash balance. As we've talked about, and we talked about in committee this afternoon, we have talked about with council and in council over the past several years, some of the financial difficulties that the Solid Waste Division is facing. And for a variety of reasons, have put off the conversation of raising revenue, raising rates to alleviate some of the financial concerns there. Continue to obviously run as lean as we can. And Eric talked to some of the things that were done over the past few years to try and reduce expenditures in that division. But we've come to the point where there's just simply no money left to fund the operation. And so in order to make sure that we don't finish the year with a negative cash balance that will go on the financial statement, we are asking council to approve a temporary cash flow loan from the wastewater fund. The loan is interest-free. I don't think I said that in committee today, so I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. It's an interest-free loan that is from ourselves, so it's not like we're getting this from a bank. We are getting this from the wastewater department and will be repaid in accordance with state statute by July, or excuse, June 30 of 2021. I am happy to answer any questions that council may have on this bill.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Councilwoman Hammond, you have a, or Councilwoman Hammond, you have a question?
Mr. Parker, what is the amount of the reserves in the wastewater fund?
Good question. I believe the latest cash balance was somewhere between $10 million and $11 million in the wastewater reserve fund. It has a cash reserve requirement of 5% of its annual expenditures, which in 2020 is somewhere around $2 million, $2.5 million. So there's sufficient reserves there to make this loan.
Thank you.
Is there any other council member that has a question? Okay, at this time then, we're going to go to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 6320?
Councilman Niskowski, we do not have anyone that has expressed interest in speaking in favor or in opposition of this bill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Jones. If there is no one to speak in opposition or in favor, at this point, the public hearing on Bill 6320 is now closed. Councilmembers, would you wish to make any statements regarding Bill 6320? I do see a hand up, however, it is not a council member. We have already closed the public portion of this bill. So if there are no statements from the council members, I will, let me see, I will entertain a motion regarding Bill 6320.
Chair Niskowski, I'd like to move that Bill 63-20 for passage.
There has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There has been a motion, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll on Bill 6320? Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Palmer has it.
Oh, okay. Yes, Attorney Palmer has his hand up. Attorney Palmer, is there a question?
Sorry to interrupt, but the motion in the committee of the hall is to recommend to the full council passage or no passage. This is not a motion to pass the bill itself.
Okay, let me restate that. I'd like to make a motion that for the...
A favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Favorable recommendation for Bill 6320.
Second.
Councilmember Niskowski? Yes. I have a person from the public that said he didn't hear you ask if anybody was against. And that may be my fault because I didn't see his hand up, but he wanted to speak against it. Is that possible? There's already been a motion. It's been seconded. And I did ask more than once if there was anybody there to speak in favor or opposition of the bill. So at this point, the public portion is closed. I was just making sure. Thank you. Sure. Thank you for asking. And I'm sorry that they missed, they were not able to have the public input, but we did, we did ask the question. So Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll on Bill 6320, please? Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. There are nine ayes. It will pass with a favorable recommendation. We're now going to proceed to Bill sixty-four twenty. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill sixty-four twenty a second reading?
Sixty-four twenty, public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year two thousand twenty.
Thank you. If you're... Someone's not muted. If you could please mute if you're getting feedback from someone. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chairperson. The Personnel and Finance Committee had a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill sixty-four dash twenty, and we sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is the petitioner present? If you are, I ask you to state your name and address and the key points regarding the bill that is before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Niskowski. Dan Parker, City Controller, office on the twelfth floor of the County City Building. Bill sixty-four twenty is the first of the two normal quarterly budget adjustment bills. As we talked about in committee, this bill does not increase or decrease the overall level of the appropriation. It simply moves money within a single fund between departments, between divisions, or between cost categories such as supplies and services. I'm happy to answer any questions that council has on the bill itself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Mr. Parker? I'll ask once more. Is there any questions for Mr. Parker from the council? Okay, at this point, we are going to move to the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill sixty-four twenty?
I don't see anyone wishing to speak in favor of this bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Bill sixty-four twenty?
I don't see anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Bill sixty-four twenty at this time.
Then at this point, we are going to close. At this point, the public hearing on Bill sixty-four twenty is now closed. Councilmembers, is there any statements you wish to make regarding Bill sixty-four twenty? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill sixty-four twenty.
I'll make a motion to send sixty-four twenty to the council with a favorable recommendation.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? There's been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll on Bill sixty-four twenty?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. It will go to as a favorable recommendation. Okay, we are going to move to Bills sixty-five twenty. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill sixty-five twenty a second reading?
Yes. Sixty-five twenty, public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year two thousand twenty. Of seven hundred and fifty thousand from General Fund number one zero one, three hundred and twenty thousand from Parks and Recreation Fund number two zero one, thirty-three thousand five hundred from Gift Donation Bequest Fund number two seventeen, five hundred thousand from Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund number two twenty-six, six million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four from COVID Response Fund number two sixty-four, two hundred thousand from County Option Income Tax Fund number four zero four, two million from Economic Development Income Tax Fund number four zero eight, one hundred and seventeen thousand from two thousand seventeen Parks Bond Capital Fund number four seventy-one, two hundred and sixty-five thousand from Solid Waste Operations Fund number six ten, one hundred and seventy-five thousand from Sewer Repair Insurance Fund number six forty, two hundred and fifty thousand from Sewer Works Operating Fund number six forty-one, one hundred and twenty-three thousand from Unemployment Compensation Fund number seven thirteen, and three hundred and six thousand five hundred and twenty-five from Eddie Street Commons Capital Fund number seven fifty-nine.
Is there a... I'm sorry. Is there a committee report?
Yes. Personnel and Finance had a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill sixty-five dash twenty, and we sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, President White. Is the petitioner present, and I ask that you state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill that is before us?
Thank you, Chair Niskowski. Dan Parker, City Controller, office on the twelfth floor of the County City Building. Sixty-five twenty is the second of the two normal quarterly budget adjustment bills. This is the request for additional appropriations over the currently budgeted amount. As we did in committee this afternoon, I do have just a few brief slides to go through the detail that was behind the bill. If it's easier to see in the packets, I know that sometimes on the screen, this detail gets a little small, so it might be easier to see in the packets. This is the first page of the detail behind the additional appropriation bill. As we normally do, we did divide it into our normal categories of unanticipated expenses, expenses supported by new revenue, capital projects, and then some administrative items. This first page is all of what we categorized as unanticipated expenses. Right off the bat, I want to point out that a large bulk of the lines on this first page are related to COVID nineteen and the city's response to COVID nineteen. And so, as we did in committee this afternoon, I'll sort of discuss those separately because I think it's helpful to look at the entirety of the COVID nineteen response and the various funding that the city got in to support that response as kind of a holistic look. And that's a little bit of a beneficial way to do it. Other than the COVID nineteen funds and the unanticipated expenses, at the top, we do have some additional appropriation requests for the fire department. The personnel side of that, particularly on the overtime, is largely due to COVID nineteen as well with firefighters being out after being exposed, obviously. The work that the fire department does means that they are exposed at a higher rate than the average person working in an office, certainly. So people being out due to COVID nineteen caused others having to cover their shifts and increased overtime because of that, as well as some increased utility and some repairs on fire trucks. The next few requests here are related to some additional appropriations in the Parks Department, just some maintenance accounts and miscellaneous utility types of things. Just above, about halfway down the page, just above the COVID nineteen funds, there's a request for an additional appropriation for workers' comp. As we talked about in committee this afternoon, workers' comp claims for police and fire specifically were higher than we budgeted in two thousand twenty. That is, we are self-funded with respect to workers' comp, meaning we pay the claims directly. And those are paid from Fund two twenty-six, which is our liability insurance fund. That fund has a fairly strong cash balance, and so we're in a good spot. But we do need to make sure we keep an eye on workers' comp claims as we move forward. One of the things that we talked about in the two thousand twenty-one budget process was the reorganization of the Safety and Risk Department and moving that function with the creation of a new position called the Manager of Employee Safety under the Human Resources Department, which we think will bear some fruit in terms of just kind of an employee safety focus across multiple departments and hopefully not only improving employee safety, but decreasing workers' compensation claims as well. Did also want to point out that several of the requests below the COVID nineteen funds were directly and are directly related to solid waste, which we talked about in Bill sixty-two twenty. So it's an additional appropriation to cover some additional expenses within the solid waste fund itself. And then the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the interfund loan that we talked about in that bill, I believe it's sixty-three twenty maybe, in that bill is included in this appropriation as well. The last thing down at the bottom is unemployment compensation. The unemployment compensation was higher in two thousand twenty than we anticipated. We are also self-funded for unemployment compensation, so we directly pay our unemployment claims. And so, again, something to keep an eye on as we move forward with that cash balance in Fund seven thirteen. The second page of the detail, this is the other three categories that we categorize these expenses into, supported by new revenue, capital projects, and some administrative items. Again, some of the larger items on here are related to COVID nineteen. And so, we'll address those separately. Did want to mention that although the total additional appropriation request is eleven point nine million, roughly nine million of that additional appropriation request is related directly to COVID nineteen. And so, we'll move forward with that and discuss that in just a second. The other items on here, in the Parks Department Fund, the golf courses, there's some additional expenditures. But it's actually a great thing because golf courses were very, very busy this year, which resulted in some additional expenses beyond what we budgeted, but obviously also resulted in revenue to support those expenses. So that's great news. In the Capital Projects Fund, there is the appropriation of additional cash in one of our bond issuances for the Park Bond Series to fund some projects that are consistent with the goals of that park bond, as well as an appropriation for some code demolitions along South Michigan Street. And then lastly, in the administrative items, this is where we put items that are either reappropriations of things that council has appropriated in the past or are essentially cleaning things up from an accounting standpoint. There is an appropriation for wayfinding sign donation. So this donation was given specifically for wayfinding signs, and we're asking council to appropriate the last piece of that so we can make that last payment. And then lastly, the Eddie Street Commons, the last payment made on the two thousand seventeen Eddie Street Commons Phase Two capital was made in two thousand twenty, and so we are asking council to appropriate the three hundred thousand, which is essentially the interest we earned on the funds as they sat in escrow during that time. So then the last piece of this, which I said I defer, is the COVID piece. And so, to look at COVID funding and the additional appropriation requests kind of comprehensively, I thought it'd be helpful to look at where we got revenue sources in related to COVID. And so, the COVID, the bulk or the largest award that we received was from the CARES Act, and it was funneled through the state agency, the Indiana Finance Authority. We were allocated three point three million dollars from that, and we used that to cover public safety wages. So we did receive that in two thousand twenty and used that to cover the cost of police officers and firefighters that continued to work during the pandemic. We were also awarded an additional allocation of CDBG of about one point five million dollars, and you can see the various programs that went to support in two thousand twenty, as well as an additional allocation of ESG, the ESG grant of similarly about one point five million dollars. And the ESG grant generally supports homeless initiatives, and so that's where you see the bulk of the spending there. We also received a grant through the state, through the Department of the FSSA, for just under six hundred thousand to fund the homeless quarantine site. And then, we also received an additional JAG grant, Justice Assistance Grant, through the Department of Justice, similar to CDBG and ESG. This is a program that the city participates in in normal years, and the CARES Act made additional distributions of those grants available for, in this case, the Police Department to help with the cost of the response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So all of those items, all of those expenditures within the COVID nineteen fund are funded by external funding sources that the city has either already received in in total or will receive in as it expends these dollars going forward. The unfunded portion of this is seen there down at the bottom, about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in just general response. That's sanitizer masks, cleaning equipment, partitions to keep people social distance when they're in the office, lots of different things going into that, but what we're kind of calling the general city COVID response. And then, six hundred and eighty thousand in small business emergency grant assistance, and that's in addition to an additional three hundred and thirty thousand that was funded through CDBG. So this is the city portion of that. And then an additional request for five hundred thousand dollars to support local restaurants. And again, we don't have a funding source identified for that at the moment, but it would help as restaurants enter into the winter months when they can't seat people outside to continue to support them as they move forward. I am happy to answer any questions that council has on this Bill sixty-five twenty.
Sorry about that. I was muted. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of Mr. Parker at this time? Councilwoman Tomas Morgan?
Thank you, Chair Niskowski. Mr. Parker, is it... Is it... If we were to receive additional CARES Act the first quarter of the year, is it possible to reimburse the current unfunded items?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Tomas Morgan. It's a good question. Obviously, it would depend on how the federal government or state government or whoever was providing the additional money structured the arrangement. So sometimes these things have time associations with it, like the original CARES Act was only covering expenditures through the end of this year. So it's possible that we could see something like that again. But from an accounting standpoint, if there is not that kind of restriction, we are ready to submit for reimbursement any or all of those expenses that fit into the guidelines of the program. And so, as long as they fit into the guidelines of the program, yes, we can reimburse them.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
And since Councilman Wax isn't able to use his button, I think he came in before President White did. So Councilman Wax, you have a question for Mr. Parker?
Thank you. Mr. Parker, thank you for your presentation. You went through the COVID additional expenditures to show how they would or may not be offset. With regard to the remainder, and I think that was somewhere between two and three million of additional expenditures, some of those you mentioned were offset by additional revenues. Were there any that were not offset that you're aware of?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Wax. Yes. So the way we structure the detail for the additional appropriations request is into four main categories: unanticipated expenses supported by new revenue, capital projects, and administrative items. Generally, the ones that are not supported by new revenue or not supported by some kind of dedicated funding source are going to be found in the unanticipated expenses, which is this first page of the detail. Now, that's offset a little bit because a lot of these are the COVID funds, as well as, you know, this five hundred thousand dollars is also related to COVID, and we did get in some reimbursement for public safety wages. So even though it's not directly covered, we do have some money that came in to cover public safety wages for this first one. But in general, the rest of these would not be covered by new revenue. So, you know, the increased utilities cost of the fire department, solid waste we talked about earlier, and then the sewage works, that's just for the interfund loan. But same thing for the workers' comp and the unemployment compensation. Those are not covered by any new revenue.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe the next council member was President White. You had a question for Mr. Parker?
No, my hand went up mistakenly. I do not... Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions from council? Is there any other questions from council members? Seeing none, I'm going to proceed to the portion, the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 6520?
Okay, I don't see anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill 6520 from the public.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Bill 6520?
Okay, I have Jesse Davis that is wishing to speak right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis, if you'll state your name and address for the record. And I believe you have three minutes.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I was just looking to clarify, on one of the slides, I think it was one of the first ones, that he was showing COVID numbers, and there was some park department stuff. I think I saw something for sewer insurance. So am I correct? Are they asking for an additional 175,000 to be transferred into the sewer insurance program? And if so, I'm just curious on why we would have that large of an expenditure in that insurance program that we didn't normally have on other years?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Parker, would you like to respond to that question? You have five minutes.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Davis, for pointing that out. Because actually, because of the way the form was structured, actually, my eye slid right from one solid waste appropriation to the other one and skipped right over the sewer repair insurance. So you're correct, yes. In the sewer repair insurance fund, there is an additional appropriation request for 175,000. And so that is related to just direct sewer repair expenses of actually going out and repairing these things. And largely happened during the second quarter of the shutdown when, or second quarter when everybody was, or more people were at home. But expenses were just higher this year than they had been in prior years.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 6520, Clerk Jones?
I don't see anyone else wishing to speak in opposition. Let me check again. Nope, I don't see anyone else wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay. So at this point, the public hearing on Bill 6520 is now closed. Council members, do you wish to make a statement regarding Bill 6520? Okay, I see no council members wishing to make a statement. So at this point, I will entertain a motion regarding Bill 6520.
And move that we send 6520 to council with a favorable recommendation.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's been a motion made, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the role?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgaatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 6520 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're going to now move to Bill 6620. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 6620 a second reading?
Yes. 6620, Public Hearing on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Various Sections of the South Bend Municipal Code to Address the Timing and Details of Various Reports that the City Administration Submits to the Common Council.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill 6620, and we sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, President White. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Thank you, Chair Nizgaatsky, Dan Parker, City Controller, 12th floor of the County City Building. Bill 6620, as we discussed in committee this afternoon, is a little bit of a hodgepodge of different reports that the municipal code actually requires the Department of Administration and Finance to provide to council at different points during the year. I said it in committee this afternoon, and I think it bears repeating, that this bill does not change any of the reporting requirements. It doesn't change any of the information contained in any of these reports. Rather, what it does is it clarifies all of the, it clarifies the various timing mainly, as well as the responsibility for the various reports in the municipal code. So, excuse me, there's sort of four different areas that are included in this bill. The first one is the reporting on certain fines. So with respect to various fines, and not all the fines are included on here, but we are proposing that we move the reporting from either monthly or quarterly on these fines collections to annually. And there's a couple of reasons for this. For one, the dollars here are relatively small. When you take the totality of all of these different fines, it's less than 100,000 annually. And so it doesn't change a whole lot on a month-to-month basis. And year-over-year changes are going to be a little bit easier to see and understand and make informed analyses on than month-over-month changes. The second thing, which we talked about in committee, is that the data here is relatively difficult to get just because these do not run through us as the city, they run through the county court system. And so it does require a certain degree of ongoing coordination with the county that with the level of detail that would be helpful in these reports is probably best served on an annual basis. And then lastly, we talked a little bit about the idea behind creating sort of a comprehensive annual revenue report that covers grant revenue, fines, fees, license fees, charges for services, kind of looking at all of these different areas that we look at in sort of a piecemeal fashion through various reports in the current system on a comprehensive basis. So that's the first area of this bill. The second area is several reports on city vehicles. And so essentially, what this does is it clarifies that the city controller is responsible for these reports as opposed to the Department of Public Works, given that the Central Services Division reports up through the Department of Administration and Finance now. The two reports here are the report on city-owned vehicles, which is just which vehicles exist in the city, what the purpose of each vehicle is, who is the primary driver, those kinds of things. And then the report on CNG utilization, which we are proposing to change from semi-annually to annually. That report shows how much, what percentage of vehicles are currently utilizing CNG, what the estimated savings related to the utilization of that CNG is compared to utilizing traditional gasoline. So we're proposing that become annually as well. The third area that we talked about in this bill is sort of what I call general financial reporting and clarifying that the report on grant revenue is just sort of clarifying which department is responsible for this, because that's not currently listed in the municipal code, and setting a deadline for that, which would coincide with the annual deadline that we have in other areas. And then what is Section 290 is what's called Report on Budget Compliance. We are currently utilizing our normal monthly financial reports to satisfy this section. And so this change to the municipal code just makes that clear that there is no additional separate report required other than the normal monthly financial reports, which does provide the information required in that section. And then the last area of this bill is business licensing reporting. So there is Section 414 and 418, changing the annual licensing fee report from semi-annually to annually, and then clarifying the language a little bit to state that only one report is actually needed annually, and it'll contain all of the information that is mentioned in both Sections 414 and 418, but we don't have to issue two separate reports. And then lastly, similarly, there's a separate requirement that we report on adult business licenses. And the proposed change would be to reduce this from quarterly to annually just because they don't really change on a quarterly basis. And so annually, we'll provide a little bit more information. Happy to answer any questions that council has on any of these changes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Parker. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Parker at this time in reference to Bill 6620? Okay, seeing none, we are going to, is that correct, Clerk Jones? I don't believe I see any hands. Mr. Wax, does Councilman Wax? Okay.
That's from before.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, so at this time, we're going to move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 6620?
I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 6620.
Okay, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 6620?
I do not see anyone in the chat wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 6620.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, then, the public hearing on Bill 6620 is now closed. Council members, if you wish to make a statement regarding Bill 6620, is there anyone that would like to make a statement? Okay, seeing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 6620.
Move for favorable recommendation for Bill 6620.
Second.
Thank you, there has been a motion made and a second. Clerk Jones, will you please take the role on Bill 6620?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgaatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 6620 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Okay, we're going to move on to Bill 6720. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 6720 a second reading?
Yes. 6720, Public Hearing on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Chapter 2, Article 5 of the South Bend Municipal Code for Pre-approved Payment of Claims.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee have held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill 6720, and we sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, President White. Is the petitioner present? And I ask that you state your name and address for the records and give us the key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Thank you, Chair, Dan Parker, City Controller, 12th floor of the County City Building. 6720, as we discussed in committee this afternoon, makes a slight change to the way in which we pay our vendors as a city. So currently, under the current law and current municipal code, a majority of the claims that we pay are required to be approved by the Board of Public Works before we are actually able to pay those claims. It might be helpful for me to clarify a little bit more than I did in committee this afternoon. This does not refer to the procurement that the Board of Public Works is responsible for. So the actual procuring, solicitation of contractors to perform public works, this has nothing to do with that. This is solely related to a single item on the board's standing agenda, which is claims approval, which is every single payment that the city makes to a vendor, regardless of whether it is a public work or not. So that's the scope of what we're looking at here. So our current municipal code requires that the majority of our payments get approved by the Board of Public Works before we are able to actually make that payment. However, state law does allow council to allow me, the city fiscal officer, to make payments in advance of board allowance if an ordinance is passed. And so that is what we are proposing here. As we said in committee this afternoon, this is not to say that we are removing the Board of Public Works from the claims review process, rather just changing the timing of that review. So once we pay the expenditures and make the payments, the Board of Public Works will review and approve those payments at their next regular meeting. As Councilmember Warner, I think, said in the committee meeting this afternoon, we recently did something similar with the Redevelopment Commission, and it has been working out fairly well. As we look at why we decided that this was a good thing and why we think that this should be beneficial for the city, in general, what this does is requires the city to get that approval before we're able to pay means that the time in which we are holding on to an invoice and waiting to pay a vendor is going to be lengthened. Generally, the city does pay on a net 30 basis, so we pay within 30 days of receiving the invoice. That's our general rule. But there are especially small local businesses that may need something quicker than that. And so we would like to be in a position to be able to turn around a payment in a net 10 kind of situation, a 10-day turnaround for payment. And that's just not going to happen if we need to wait for the Board of Public Works to meet and approve the claim before we're able to actually pay it. In terms of the reasons why we think that this is acceptable or why the board exists in the approval stream to begin with, basically, the board is there to do two things. It's to assure the appropriateness of the expenditures so that we're not doing anything, we're not paying for anything that is illegal or against the municipal code or something to that effect. And we think that we've put in place quite a few processes to limit this as we move forward. Our new ERP system, which we implemented in 2020, has very enhanced review and approval processes in the city. Most payments that we make are required to be matched against a purchase order, meaning at least two people, and in most cases, three or four people, or even up to five, six, seven people, have looked at an expenditure, given it their approval, and said, yes, this is good to move forward with. In addition, we have, the new ERP system has made it easier for the city controller, myself and my deputy Ben, to review the disbursements that go out on a weekly basis. We can review those in Excel, we can run analyses on it within Excel in a way that we weren't able to before when we were just looking at a PDF document. And that has really enhanced the disbursement review process, and we're able to catch things much earlier on before they would ever get to the board, even in the current environment. So we've come a long way in our processes. In addition, we've come a long way from a transparency perspective. So the other reason for bringing these claims to the board for approval is to ensure that there's transparency in what the city is paying out on. We talked about it in the committee meeting as well. But I did want to bring up, in 2020, the city launched our, that's not what it is, our Financial Transparency Dashboard, which can be found on the city's Transparency Hub on our city website. So if you go to the Transparency Hub and click on City Finances, that will bring up the Financial Transparency Dashboard, which lists all of the city's spending. Actually, it goes all the way back through 2019, so you can get 2019 data here as well. And so you can see city spending by cost category. So if you want to look at our top vendors overall, or if you want to say, I want to see what our top vendors are in the repair and maintenance category, you can look at that as well. And then you can also see the transaction level detail. So you can see the total amount that we've spent in 2020. If I want to say, I want to look at all of the spend, all of the expenditures for the Department of Administration and Finance, I can do that as well. If I want to say, I want to look at all the expenditures for Admin and Finance within the other services and charges, I can do that as well. I also can filter by date here. So if I did want to replicate what would have gone to the Board of Public Works in advance of these spending and say, I want to see what we spent on December 8, which is when we cut our last check, we can do that as well, and we can see everything that we cut on December the 8. and we can see everything that we cut on December the 8. So this city checkbook is, I think, a big step in the right direction in terms of transparency. It's searchable. You can also, I didn't say this at committee, but you can also see the raw data. So there's a link to the raw data here as well, which can be downloaded and then analyzed in Excel. So I think we're actually moving in the correct direction with respect to transparency. And it's important to note, as I said earlier, that the original transparency that we talked about with the Board of Public Works is still there. The Board of Public Works still views the transactions in the same way they are currently, and they will approve all the claims. It doesn't remove the review, it just changes the timing of that review. Happy to answer any questions from council members on this bill or from the public.
Okay. Thank you once again, Mr. Parker. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Parker on Bill 6720? Any questions?
You have Councilmember Eli Wax.
Ah, thank you, President White. Councilman Wax, you have a question for Mr. Parker?
Yes. So could you confirm that all these that would be... You'd be able to pay out without preapproval? There's either been... There's been a work order for them already? So the work has already been somewhat approved before it was done?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Wax. It's a great question. And yes, so the vast majority of the payments we make, I would say close to 90% or more, are required in our new process to have, to be attached to a fully approved purchase order, meaning that that review has already taken place. It's gone through what we call our buyer, which is sort of a centralized procurement team. It's gone through the division approver of the division making the expenditures, so usually a department director or a department head. It's gone through a fiscal officer from the financial side. Those three approvals will occur on every single purchase order. In addition, depending on what kind of purchase order it is, it might get legal review if it's a service contract. The system will require legal review. If it's over $50,000, it will require approval by the department or the Division of Diversity and Inclusion, as well as by the controller. If it is a public work, if it's classified as a public work, then it will require approval by the Board of Public Works to actually become a fully approved purchase order. So there's a pretty robust system in place, a system of approvals in place, well before we ever get to the point of actually paying the invoice. This is all done sort of on the front end, and then we pay the invoice. So the only thing that this proposed bill would change is the last step in the current process, which is after all of those approvals have already occurred, we have to get that one final approval by the Board of Public Works. In some cases, again, they've already approved the project, and now they're approving the payment on the project to actually make the payment.
And then if there was an increase in the expectation, let's say there was unexpected development, would that necessarily had a work order to change that? To already be approved previously?
So yes. Oh, yes, absolutely. So if the Board of Public Works approved a project, and the project came in over budget, so, you know, it's going to cost more than what was originally approved, that would be a change order to the purchase order that would go back through all of those layers of review that we talked about: Legal Department, Controller's Office, Department of Diversity and Inclusion, the Board of Public Works. And only after that purchase order was approved to move up to the higher level of the cost would we be able to actually pay the amount of that cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wax. Is there any other council members that have a question for Mr. Parker? Okay, seeing none. At this time, we're going to move to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 6820? Am I on the right bill? I'm sorry, I have the wrong bill. 6720.
Yeah, 6720. I do not see anyone from the public expressing interest in speaking in support of Bill 6720.
Okay. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to Bill 6720?
I see... Okay. Jesse Davis has his hand up. Mr. Davis, do you want to go ahead and say your name and your address for the record? And then you have five minutes.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Earlier in the committee meeting, I had a couple of questions. And I just want to say that, hey, I'm all for streamlining the process and making payments, you know, quicker and everything. So between the committee meeting and listening in on this meeting, it sounds like you've got everything covered as far as, let's say, bid procedure jobs that go through the Board of Public Works and things of that nature as far as contracting and stuff. So I'm just curious, this new ERP system that you've got in place, it sounds like this bill you have is also for like purchase orders if you're purchasing items for the city. So is there a way that they are able to basically keep track of items that are being purchased? And what is actually, in fact, in the city's inventory? Because there was a problem a couple of years ago where there was a large dollar amount of city equipment that just mysteriously turned up at the city garage. And it's still kind of an unresolved issue on who had that equipment and when it was purchased and who dropped it back at the city. So will there be a way in this program to keep track of what's being purchased and to make sure that it is, in fact, being purchased for city use and it's in the city's inventory?
Mr. Parker, you have five minutes to respond, if you would like to respond to that question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Yes, there is. So I can and I won't, just because I think I would be the only one here after a while. But I could talk all night about sort of all the things that go on in this system. But yes, so there's a few things that go into your question. One is procurement, which is sort of the focus of most of what we're talking about here. But it is subject to that enhanced procurement procedure, review procedure, where multiple people are approving so that somebody can't just buy something without other people being aware of it and signing off on it to make sure that the use of the funds is in the city's best interest and is for the city itself. The other two areas that I think are relevant to what you're asking about are inventory. There's an inventory module, as well as fixed assets. So we are... And when I say fixed assets, I generally mean equipment that costs more than $10,000, vehicles that cost more than $10,000, things like infrastructure assets, you know, roads and water mains and all that kind of good stuff. So we are actually... This ERP helped us enormously in the realm of fixed assets, track and identify each individual asset that the city owns. And if anybody, you know, any of the department directors from the city are still on, they're probably smiling to themselves right now because we just finished what we call our fixed asset inventory, where we send out a list to all the different departments of every single asset that's in our books as this is a city-owned asset, and ask them to verify that that asset still exists, that it's in good working order, all of those good things. And then they actually, them and their teams have to sign those inventory, that inventory to make sure that what's in the system actually accurately reflects what's on hand. So to help avoid exactly the situations that you're talking about. So yes, I'll leave it there because, like I said, I could go a lot further. But yes, there's a lot of approval mechanisms within the new system. We have a new policy structure that governs procurement, that governs fixed asset, that governs inventory, that is much more robust and provides for the level of review and approval that we need.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 6720?
There is no one else wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 6720.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point then, the public hearing on Bill 6720 is now closed. Council members, will you wish to make a statement regarding Bill 6720? Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan?
It's Chair Niskowski. I just want to say briefly that this bill really does... Changing the timing and faster payment really does benefit smaller businesses, many of which tend to be women, minority-owned businesses.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morgan. Is there any...
I move for favorable recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
There has been a motion regarding Bill 6720 and a second. Clerk Jones, would you please take the roll call?
Yes. Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 6720 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're going to move on to Bill 6820. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 6820 a second reading?
Yes. 6820, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Adopting an Investment Policy for the City of South Bend.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there a committee report?
Yes. The Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill 68-20, and we send this bill to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, President White. Is Mr. Parker present?
Yeah, he's...
Oh, yes. Your last one. So you guys, I know, are very tired of hearing from me. So fortunately for you, this is the last one that I'm speaking to. So this Bill 6820 is the proposing that council exercise its authority under Indiana statute to adopt an investment policy on the part of the city. As you guys know, we do have a $185 million investment portfolio that is...
Mr. Parker, could you please state your name and address for the record before you go too far? Thank you.
I am sorry, Chair. Yes, Dan Parker, City Controller, office on the 12th floor of the County City Building.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Absolutely. So the investment policy that we currently have would govern our $185 million investment portfolio. It does not have any change in current investment practices. It simply, what it does is authorize all legally allowable investment vehicles. So the state does clamp down fairly significantly on what we are allowed to invest in. And they are generally very safe, liquid investments. So this is US Treasuries and discount notes that are backed and issued by a federal agency, highly rated CDs or money markets, and then municipal securities issued by Indiana municipalities. It also allows for us to invest up to 25% of the portfolio in securities that have a slightly longer maturity. So Indiana statute requires that at least 75% of the portfolio have a maturity of less than two years. But it does allow that 25% of the portfolio can be invested with a longer maturity. Now, as we said in committee, that does not mean that those longer maturity securities are not liquid. Our investment advisor, who will come and speak to council when they convene as the Board of Finance in January, will tell you that he could sell any and all of our portfolio today. Well, tomorrow, I guess, if we wanted him to. So all of our portfolios very liquid. We're just asking for this $185 million to be put in a few... And it's some securities that gives us a little bit more interest return than just our checking account. Happy to answer any questions that council has.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Parker? No questions from any council members? Okay, then at this time, we're going to move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 6820?
I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of this bill.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to Bill 6820?
I do not see anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this bill.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point then, the public hearing on Bill 6820 is now closed. Council members, if you wish to make a statement regarding Bill 6820? Any council member? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 6820.
Move for favorable recommendation.
Second.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Would you please call the roll call in reference to Bill 6820?
Yes. Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones.
Thank you to Councilwoman Niskowski. I'm going to ask Mr. Parker to stay with us until we get to the third reading for Bill 63-20 because we will have to modify that bill based on recommendation from the city attorney as well as our attorney. It's minor, but we have to... After you have given us the recommendation, then that motion would have to be amended.
Okay. Will do. Thank you, President White.
Okay. Bill 6820 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're going to move on to, I believe, the last bill, which is Bill 6920. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 6920 a second reading?
6920, Public Hearing on an Ordinance to Vacate the Following Described Property. Street Vacation Luther Court from Notre Dame Avenue East 250 feet plus or minus to the end of the right-of-way and Edmund Court from Colfax Avenue North 198 feet plus or minus Luther Court, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. There is a committee report. Public Works and Property Vacation had a committee hearing, and this was sent to the committee of... It was sent with a favorable recommendation for Bill 6920. Sorry, it's been a long night. Is the petitioner present? And if you are, I ask that you state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Thank you. Mike Danch from Dan Charner and Associates. It's 1643 Commiss Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioners. And as it was mentioned at the committee meeting, what we're asking to do is to vacate two alleys. One of them is known as Luther Court. The other one is known as Edmund Court. They're bounded by the area that's La Salle on the north, Notre Dame on the west, Notre Dame Avenue on the west, Colfax on the south, and Eddie Street on the east. Mainly what we're doing, the petitioners own all the property that are adjacent to the two alleys that we're requesting to be vacated. This is part of where the South Bend Clinic is, along with some other property owners. These two alleys would be vacated. They would turn into private driveways. This is really to control the access for these property owners so that they still will have access to their properties, but they will not be public alleys. As part of the process, we did go through the Board of Public Works. We received a favorable recommendation from them for the vacation of both of the alleys. There were two conditions that the Board of Works put on this vacation process, which we have agreed to do. One is that after council would approve the vacation of both of these right-of-ways, that there would be a recordable ingress and ingress easement document created that would still allow the adjacent owners to have access to these driveways out to Notre Dame Avenue and down to Colfax, which we have agreed to. The second condition was is that these alleys were actually constructed of these large pavers that the city uses in some of the streets, that we would give those pavers back to the city, and we have agreed to that as well. If council has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Danch. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Danch in regards to Bill 6920? Okay. No questions? Okay, so at this time, we're going to move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill sixty-nine twenty? At this time, there is no one from the public wishing to speak in favor of the Bill sixty-nine twenty. Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill sixty-nine twenty? At this time, there is no one in the public present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill sixty-nine. Thank you very much, Clerk Jones. Then at this point, the public hearing on Bill sixty-nine twenty is now closed. Councilmembers, if you would like to make a statement regarding Bill sixty-nine twenty? Anybody?
Thank you for your patience, Mister Danch.
No problem.
Okay, so I will then now, if there is no statements, I will entertain a motion regarding Bill sixty-nine twenty.
I make a motion that we send Bill sixty-nine twenty to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there has been a motion, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride? Vice President McBride? She may be muted.
I'm here. I'm sorry, I lost my mouse. Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Danch, for waiting so patiently. So Bill sixty-nine twenty will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. So I will entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please take the roll call? Yes. Councilmember Nisgowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Lee? Okay.
Aye. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and actions taken regarding deals that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, would you please give third reading to Bill sixty-three dash twenty?
Sixty-three dash twenty?
Yes, because action, there's no action sixty twenty.
Sixty-three twenty. Third reading on an ordinance of the South Bend Common Council approving an interfund loan from Fund six forty-one Sewer Works Operations to Fund sixteen, six ten Solid Waste Operations for cash flow purposes and declaring an emergency in connection with the time specified for its repayment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Nisgowsky, is there a recommendation for the council members regarding the action that was taken under the committee of the whole?
Yes, Bill sixty-three twenty was voted on, was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to turn this portion over to our attorney, who can give us the language for this particular bill and the best way to go and to amend the recommendation. Mister Palmer, Attorney Palmer?
Yes, I'm here, President White. Are you referring to sixty-two twenty?
No, sixty-three twenty. That's the one that we would need to put a special time. That bill, I received an email, I thought it was from you.
Right. I believe it's sixty-two twenty, President White.
Okay. Because, yes, someone said sixty-three twenty.
Okay. Yes, President White, I believe that your recommendation in the committee of the whole was to set a date in February in order to report back and have this back on the council agenda. I would recommend that you, that a motion be made to report back to the council by a date certain, and I would recommend that that date certain would be February twenty-second, which would be the second council meeting of the month. That way, the bill is not hanging out indefinitely, and we know a date certain by which we will have the information for the council to take further action.
So we need to go back to sixty-two and to amend the recommendation?
Correct, President White. I think the proper procedure would be to make a motion to delay consideration of this bill until February twenty-second.
Councilmember, you heard the recommendation from our attorney and how the motion should be stated. Do I have a council member who would like to make the motion, followed by a second?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please give, call the roll for Bill sixty-two dash twenty?
Sixty-two dash twenty?
Yes.
Okay, because I read sixty-three dash twenty.
I know it. The email that I got says sixty-three, but Attorney Palmer said it's actually sixty-two dash twenty.
Okay.
Well, he has his hands up again. Attorney Palmer?
You've got to read that into a record.
Attorney Palmer? We'll go back, and I would ask that, Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill sixty-two dash twenty?
Correct. And the motion should be made.
Motion, yes.
Okay. Sixty-two twenty. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend Municipal Code at section seventeen dash one thirty-two and seventeen dash one thirty-three of Article fifteen, Chapter seventeen, to adjust the low-income customer assistance program rate.
Now, a motion needs to be made based on the recommendation from our attorney?
Oh, wow. I'd like to make a motion that sixty-two, sixty-two twenty is the third reading, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. That motion has been made and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
I'm sorry, I need a point of clarification. My internet bleeped, and I didn't get the date that Councilman Warner Davis said.
That February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgowsky?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I apologize for that mistake, but my email text that I got said Bill sixty-three dash twenty. So I'm going to ask Clerk Jones to give third reading to Bill sixty-three dash twenty once again.
Okay. Sixty-three twenty. Third reading on an ordinance of the South Bend Common Council approving an interfund loan from Fund six forty-one Sewer Works Operations to Fund sixteen Solid Waste Operations for cash flow purposes and declaring an emergency in connection with the time specified for its repayment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nisgowsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White. Bill sixty-two twenty was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmembers, what is your pleasure regarding Bill sixty-three dash twenty?
I move for passage of Bill sixty-three twenty.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
A second?
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Well, now, move to the next bill, and I think that for third reading, that is Bill sixty-four twenty?
Yes.
Will you please give third reading to sixty-four twenty, please?
Sixty-four twenty. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty.
Thank you. Move for pass- Councilwoman Nisgowsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Bill sixty-four twenty was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Now, we'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill sixty-four dash twenty?
Move for passage.
We have a motion. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill sixty-five dash twenty, please?
Yes. Sixty-five twenty. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year twenty-twenty. Of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from General Fund number one zero one, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand from Parks and Recreation Fund number two zero one, thirty-three-thousand-five-hundred from Gift Donation Request Fund number two seventeen, five-hundred-thousand from Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund number two twenty-six, six-million-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-four from COVID-nineteen Response Fund number two sixty-four, two-hundred-thousand from County Option Income Tax Fund number four zero four, two-million from Economic Development Income Tax Fund number four zero eight, one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand from two thousand seventeen Parks Bond Capital Fund number four seventy-one, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand from Solid Waste Operations Fund number six ten, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand from Sewer Repair Insurance Fund number six forty, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from Sewer Works Operating Fund number six forty-one, one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand from Unemployment Compensation Fund number seven thirteen, and three-hundred-and-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-five from Eddie Street Commons Capital Fund number seven fifty-nine.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nisgowsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding this bill?
Um, yes, this bill was sent to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We would now entertain a motion.
Move for passage.
We have a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you now give third reading to Bill sixty-six dash twenty?
Sixty-six twenty. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending various sections of the South Bend Municipal Code to address the timing and details of various reports that the city administration submits to the common council.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nisgowsky, is there a report from the committee of the whole regarding Bill sixty-six dash twenty?
Yes, President White. Bill sixty-six twenty was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a motion regarding this bill?
Move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Well, now, move to Bill sixty-seven dash twenty. Could you please give third reading to this bill?
Sixty-seven twenty. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter two, Article five of the South Bend Municipal Code for pre-approved payment of claims.
Councilwoman Nisgowsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White. Bill sixty-seven twenty was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill sixty-seven dash twenty.
Move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill sixty-seven dash twenty has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill sixty-eight dash twenty?
Sixty-eight twenty. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, adopting an investment policy for the city of South Bend.
Councilwoman Nisgowsky, is there a report from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White. Bill sixty-eight twenty was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have a recommendation regarding Bill sixty-eight dash twenty?
I move for passage of Bill sixty-eight twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Uh, Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Sixty-eight dash twenty has now been passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill sixty-nine dash twenty?
Sixty-nine twenty. Third reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. Street vacation Luther Court from Notre Dame Avenue east, two-hundred-and-fifty-feet plus or minus to the end of the right-of-way, and Edmund Court from Colfax Avenue north, one-hundred-and-ninety-eight feet plus or minus to Luther Court, south Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Niskoski, is there a report from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White. Bill Number 6920 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have a recommendation regarding Bill 69-20?
Book to pass.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 69-20 has passed. We do not have any resolutions at this time. We'll now move to Bill's first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 70-20 a first reading?
7020, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1915 North Bendix.
I would now like to entertain a motion to send Bill 70-20 to the zoning and annexation committee for a committee meeting and public hearing and set for third reading for, um, January 11, 2021. So moved. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you now give, uh, Bill 71-20 a first reading?
7120, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1643 Prairie.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to send Bill 71-20 to zoning and annexation, uh, committee set for second reading and third reading at the council for January 11, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Is it moved and seconded? All those in favor of the motion might hear you vote? I'm sorry. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
It's the last one, okay.
I thought it was somewhere else, okay?
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Is there any new business at this time for any council members? If not, I would like to make announcement that our organizational meeting will be held January the 4th, 2021, and I believe that time is at 5:30. Councilmembers, you should be receiving information about the organizational meeting, uh, this week. I would now like to ask Councilwoman, uh, Sharon McBride to give us an update on the COVID, COVID-19 initiatives.
Thank you. Real quick, um, thank everybody for coming to the commercials. They should start, uh, running, um, for the community, I think, on Wednesday. Uh, we are finishing up our Toys for Tots, uh, dates and securing that for the 18th and 19th. I'll let you know more specifics, uh, in the next day or so, and also been picking up, uh, gloves and hats and socks. We have a lot of initiatives going on for the Toys for Tots, uh, for hat, glove, and sock drive for the homelessness community and weather amnesty, and we also have food distribution that will be given out, uh, the week of Christmas for, uh, ham and turkeys and a contribution to the Northern Indiana Food Bank. So just want to thank all of the council members for their support and participation and, uh, their concern and care for our community, um, not just during COVID, but this has been extremely difficult times for everyone and for administration for partnering with us. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to, unless there's no other new business, privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting under privilege of the floor?
I don't see, let me see, I'm looking...
I do see, uh, I thought I saw it.
Um, yes, it's, um, Jesse Davis. Uh, Mr. Davis, if you could state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
I think this session is three minutes.
Oh, three minutes, I'm sorry.
Under the floor, just state your name and address, please.
Jesse Davis, Bureau Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I was just curious if the council might be able to get, uh, some type of information for the public. Um, I, I know they have a, um, transparency, uh, thing, and they also have, um, uh, the police department has a, uh, hub where you can go look for crime, but I've been on both of those sites and trying to find the actual numbers for shootings this year, for actual shootings, um, and actual homicides this year has been very difficult. The, the numbers seem to differ a lot between the sites and what the news reports, and so there's been a lot of questions on, on, uh, social media as to exactly how many shootings we've had this year and how many homicides, because it appears that those numbers have increased, uh, quite a bit this year in compared to years past. So I was just wondering if the council could look into that, and also how many unresolved homicides we have in our community?
Thank you, Mr. Jesse. We appreciate your comments, and we will follow up. Uh, we'll reach out to the mayor's office and also, uh, the police department to find the best way to, for you to be able to receive that information.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. Is there anyone else under privilege of the floor?
I don't see anyone else under, um, wishing to speak under privilege of this floor at this time.
Okay, then. I would just like to say to all the council members and the city clerk and our public and our citizens, uh, please have a happy holiday and a blessed new year. Uh, for council members, this was your first year. You've completed 12 months, and you've done a fantastic job. I have enjoyed working with each and every one of you, as well as with, um, members of the city clerk. Uh, there is much work that remains, but with us working together and keeping the eye, which is making the best, uh, of use of the resources that we have for the betterment of our citizens, we can't go wrong. So I, I wish you very happy, happy holiday. Enjoy yourself. Uh, please stay healthy and safe and, um, have a very, very happy time away and enjoy yourself with your family as well.
And you too.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Sweet. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.[1735.12]